Chair will call the June 4, 2019 meeting in the City Council order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Well, dear.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderwoman Simpson.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Alderman McMinimman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, quorum is present. Thank you. I'd ask everybody to take a moment of silence for the victims of the shooting of the Virginia Beach city with regards to the victims and their families, please. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize we do have visitors from Jinan, which is the capital city of China, province of Shandong, and they are city planners. And Val, I don't know if you'd like to introduce Yu Xingtao and the others?
Sure.
If you'd like to give an overview and then introduce them real quick.
Good evening. A colleague of mine, who is the Community Development Director in Decatur, Illinois, Ray Lai, called me a few weeks ago and asked me if we would host some planners who were visiting from China for an afternoon. So, we've kept them very busy this afternoon. We took them on a walking tour. We talked about development in the city. And so now I'd just like you to, I'd have them come up and introduce themselves and tell a little bit about what their time here in the United States has been about.
Thank you. Glad to see you, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Dongxu Lyu. We are, we have three from Jinan. The city is in the same province with your sister city, sister city, Jingning. And I was born in Jingning also. We are glad to visit Springfield. We will visit U.S. for three months from the Exchange Program, R C M A, the International City Management Association. We have stayed in Austin, Texas for two months, and we'll stay in Illinois for one month. We visited Chicago, Decatur, Illinois, and San Martin Louis. Today, we visit Springfield. You know, the last, the better. Thank you very much for your support, and I invite you to visit our city and welcome to China. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we do have a sister city, Jingning City, which is the home of Confucius, and we signed that last year. So, we welcome the visitors from Jinan, which is the capital of Shandong Province in China. So, welcome. We hope you enjoy your stay. Next.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I know we've got a presentation tonight, and then you also have representatives from Republic here that you thought would be best allowed to come before the council, early in the meeting before than later. But there's something else that I'd like to take out of order. It would normally fall under old business. It's to discuss a zoning vote that was taken, that was taken two weeks ago, particularly, specifically, it was docket number 2019-019, having to do with the Dollar General at 11th Street. That took some discussion that night. I believe the engineer architect that was here that night was supposed to get with you and give you the general regional manager, and that never took place, so we could communicate. I'd like to change my vote. I was on the prevailing side two weeks ago. It was a 7-3 vote. And the rules of, Robert's Rules of Order is such that if you're on the prevailing side, you can ask for a revote at the next legislative session. And this is two weeks later. This is the next legislative session where we vote passage of matters that are voted upon. So, I'd like to, I know that our city attorney hasn't found the procedure to be used for a revote of a zoning matter. So, in the absence of a definitive ruling by our city attorney, I'd like to go forward with that revote if the motion is approved by the city council by a majority vote to revote that zoning matter. And if later on, our city attorney finds something that makes the revote contrary to accepted practice, then we can receive that advice when that time comes. So, I'd make a motion for a revote.
I guess the question would be, if he wants to change his vote, couldn't he just change his vote to a no and record that in the minutes? And then unless someone else, then it'd be a six-board vote? Or would you just do the total revote?
Well, the, a member wants voting, cannot, after the vote is final, cannot go back and change their vote, particularly if it would change the result. I think what Alderman McMinimman is wanting to do is make a motion to reconsider the action by which the previous docket had been adopted. And if the council, him having voted on the prevailing side, you may make a motion normally with ordinances to reconsider prior actions. However, what I'd mentioned to Alderman McMinimman is that if the council votes to reconsider, which basically allows it to be rediscussed, you know, redebated, and then a final motion to either adopt or, either adopt it prior to go ahead and approve it, or otherwise, my concern is, which I'd mentioned, is that zoning is a different type of action than a normal ordinance, because in order to do a zoning change, you have to publish in the newspaper. There are certain legal requirements in order to take proper action. And if the council determines to reconsider that and to end up with a different result, then I will have to carefully look at whether or not that's binding, because that, in effect, changes a prior grant of right regarding zoning without publishing and without notice. So, that is the area of my concern. And I, in fairness to Alderman McMinimman, he actually asked me that question. We haven't had a chance to resolve it fully. We were not able to find any cases where that procedure had been applied. And that's what Alderman McMinimman was referring to.
And I respect, Mr. Mayor, I respect that opinion. But what we're really doing is, we're just revoting something that was already published, something for which notice was already given, and we're just reconsidering that vote. And as I understand it, Mr. Mayor, you have not signed that ordinance or that zoning decision. Is that correct? So, it's not a final act, and it's not a final act until opportunity for a revote has, has been exhausted and passed. So, I would make a motion that we take a revote. And, Mr. Attorney, if you find something that's binding later, then we'll just, we'll consider a void action.
I would second that motion.
And the motion would be to reconsider the prior vote by which the docket was adopted. So, it's a motion to reconsider.
So, there's been a motion to reconsider and a second, a discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Redpath.
I think we're setting a bad precedent here. I don't think that, I don't, I know that we've had our problems with, I know Alderman Turner and others had their problems with the Dollar General. I don't have a dog in this fight. I think we're setting a bad precedent, drawing back things up, back up for discussion and reconsideration at this point. An executive order was issued to give these people the right to go ahead and start the construction on this thing. It's almost, I don't know if it's done or not. I haven't been by the building or not. I think this is a bad precedent. I don't think this is the right thing to do. I think we're making a mistake.
Alderwoman Turner.
I value Alderman Redpath's opinion. However, the motion to reconsider process is, we're not setting a precedent. That's a process that is part of Robert's Rules of Order that is used by every legislative body anywhere in the United States of America. So, we're not setting a precedent. We're simply utilizing a process that is already available for any legislative body to utilize.
Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, I agree with the motion to reconsider. I was one of those that voted no. And I'd just like to add to the discussion that moving forward, if, I think we've had this discussion before about executive orders, if an executive order is issued, if it can be somewhat translated down to the, to the city council level so that we know. Because I got a few calls on this one, and to my knowledge, work had not started because, you know, we didn't approve the zoning, so nothing happened. But they said work had started and an executive order was issued. So, had no knowledge of it, but it's not in my ward. But had, again, had no knowledge, an executive order was issued. So, I just asked that, when executive orders are issued, especially on zoning matters that were made aware.
Yeah, that was made, request from Alderman Senior at the time. As we know, that development for that particular area has been lacking, so that was one of his main motivation factors for that. So, whatever the pleasure of the council is. Alderman Fulgenzie.
Yes. There's been a lot of discussion by some people saying that this is a hard town to do business in. And we've been trying to change that, that perception. And I think this would be along the same lines. I think to reconsider this would only add to the, to the fire as far as what we're, what we're accomplishing here and what we hope to accomplish. And I would hate to see anybody come to Springfield to build and then only be told two or three weeks later that, no, we decided against it. I just think it'd be a bad precedent, too.
Alderwoman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't on the council, of course, when this, this happened. I am the representative of the ward now, and I have some real problems with this particular development. Most of you know, or if you don't, I'll be real clear. I believe that economic development in Ward 2 should not be any different than other wards. There was no transparency with regard to the Dollar General in the ward. Nobody knew. Even during the campaign, there was secrecy. There's something coming, but can't say what it is. So, the, the community didn't even have an opportunity to even voice to the elected representative what their issues and concerns were. That's troubling, and that shouldn't happen. And I believe that had there been an opportunity for the community to the voice, they would have said, no, that's not a good location and a good fit, not a Dollar General.
Any other discussion on the motion? Alderman Donlin.
Just a point of clarification. What was, what was the vote when this was approved?
I think it was 7-3.
I don't recall for sure. I think, I think that is correct. I don't have the vote in front of me. Thank you.
And I'd just like, Mr. Mayor, make a clarification. I'm not a permanent no. If Dollar General wants to prove themselves to be good neighbors and down the road, they want to repetition, and I've expressed this to Alderman, Alderwoman Simpson, and also to Alderwoman Turner, that if Dollar General wants to meet with the aldermen where we're having problems with their stores, and they can convince us that they're prepared to be good neighbors, and they want to repetition for 11th Street, you know, I'm not a permanent no. But at this point in time, I think it's, we've heard Dollar General in the past come to us, two years ago and four years ago, make all kinds of promises that they'll turn things around, and they, they haven't. And we've got issues on MacArthur with the Dollar General there that have gone unresolved for over a year. And I've personally gone into the store, and we're not getting their attention. And we don't want additional Dollar Generals to be there in, at additional locations if they're unresponsive to the neighborhoods. So, that's, that's the premise of my revote.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think that, I agree with Alderman Redpath, and I know this is a, you know, it's parliamentary procedure. My concern is, is if we're, if we're going to reverse the vote on it, to me, they should have to come back at the next zoning with the same publications that's required and be added, re-added to the zoning docket, because, and that's when the vote should take place, because as far as they know, everything's good. They're not able to be here to, at least even send a representative. My concern is legal action against a city, because, because we're doing it this way. I have no problem with sending it back to the zoning docket on the next council, but I just have a problem if we're going to vote something and then turn around and take it away. If you had a problem, if someone had a problem with it before, they should have voted no at that time. You know, this, we don't have conditional, conditional votes. And so, you either vote for it or you vote against it. But let the chips fall where they, they lie, you know? I mean, but I think that they need to go, it needs to go back on the docket for next, next meeting, so that all the proper people can be notified and that, at that time.
Corporation Council, you want to weigh in on the process?
The, the best approach would be that if the council moves to reconsider, what that means is, not to be too technical, but under parliamentary procedure, when you move to reconsider, if that motion passes, that means the docket has now been, will be reconsidered. So, your motion to reconsider doesn't change the result. It simply brings it forward for discussion. If that motion passes, then I think the best approach would then be to delay that final discussion until, and I actually had mentioned this earlier, to the zoning docket, which would be two weeks, it'd be the third, yeah, the next council meeting minimally, so that the parties could be notified. Because, again, I want to make sure, if you take action tonight to reconsider, take action to reverse the zoning that's been granted, but without publication or due process, then, and again, I need to be very careful, because I don't want that to be used against the city, but that can create a potential issue for the city if that is challenged. So, that's all I'm trying to get to, is that if you, because of the special nature of zoning, remember, there's a state statute that says how zoning happens. That statute requires publication and notice. And the city can actually rezone property on its own motion, but you have to give notice and take, you know, give due process to the property owner. So, if the motion is to reconsider, then my minimal recommendation today would be at least to have that then be presented at the next zoning docket, so that we would give notice to those parties. They may appear and say, you can't, or they may appear and say, let's discuss it. But that would at least leave open the option for what the council might want to do on reconsideration.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Redpath.
Just for clarification, I understand the opposition to this, and I know we've had problems with, with Dollar General in the past. My, my objection to this whole process is exactly that, that we need to make sure we do the right process. We bring it back for reconsideration at the zoning, zoning committee, I think that's the right thing to do. I don't want to meddle in anybody else's ward and Alderman, Alderman Simpson's ward, but the bottom line is, is my, my objection is to the process. Not giving proper notice is dangerous. I think we're going to get ourselves in a lawsuit. And I think, I really believe that if, if the, if the motion prevails, that we need to send it back to the zoning, zoning committee.
Mr. Mayor, the official vote was seven yes, three no. Thank you. Alderwoman Turner.
And I don't have a problem with it going back to the zoning, zoning docket. I don't have a problem with that at all. However, I really don't see this as meddling in another alderman's ward, because there was a very, very, very lengthy discussion about this two weeks ago. And at that time, there were problems in wards 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7. That's a majority of the, of the wards that are in the city of Springfield. So, this is not an isolated incident, and it's the same business that is, that is acting in such an egregious manner. And it, it should be troubling to everyone sitting around the horseshoe and everyone in the Springfield community that there was a long discussion about the terrible manner in which Dollar General was doing their business. It was a terrible manner in which they were allowing the entrance ways into the city to look absolutely horrible when we're trying, when we are a tourist town. And all of the other businesses that surround it are very nice, very well-kept, and they stand out like a sore thumb. All of that happened with their engineer standing right there. He heard all of that. The mayor asked that he be given the name of a regional manager that he could talk to about this. Nothing. Two weeks. So, so when you say that the city is, is, will be looked at as not being business-friendly, you have a business that is, is just basically thumbing their nose at the city, saying, we don't care what you say, we're going to do whatever it is that we, that we want to do. That should be troubling to everybody, and I don't think that that's something that we should or could let stand. And again, we're talking about problems in five wards out of 10.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman McMinimman, then Alderwoman Simpson.
Thank you for those comments, Alderman Turner. I think I see a procedural solution to the situation, that we, the solution would be that we proceed with the motion to reconsider and get that voted upon and hopefully pass tonight. And then, as our Corporation Council suggested, we then, what was the word you used? We defer or we?
We can postpone final vote until the, the next docket, the zoning docket, which would be at the third, third Tuesday, you know, our next council meeting. And so that notice could be given to the property owners.
So, in that fashion?
And the attorneys involved.
We will have met the requirement to reconsider it at the next legislative session, which is tonight. And then we actually vote on the matter in two weeks at the next legislative session, because we've deferred the vote on the, on the zoning matter. And that may be advantageous. Why? Because I know Alderwoman DeSensio wishes to weigh in on this issue, and she'll be here in two weeks. So, that may be advantageous to all concerned.
So, is that your motion?
My motion is to vote on reconsideration, but then we'll suspend a further vote on whether to deny the zoning petition for two weeks from now.
Good. Alderwoman Simpson.
I, I need to add, in full transparency, I have been in touch with the gentleman that was here at the council meeting, Joe Rossal. And he did send me an email regarding a couple of issues that I asked him about. I'm going to vote in favor of this reconsideration. And I would really like for this, the, the name of the individual that he sent me, who is the contact for Dollar General, I'd really like to see that individual here, because they, he needs to know the concerns that we have in this city. Dollar General makes a lot of money in the city of Springfield, and they need to be more responsive to our concerns. I'm not sure why Mr. Rossal didn't send the information to you. Maybe it slipped his mind. I don't know. But I did need to let you know that I do have some information relative to who the individual was.
Is the person's name Caleb Smith?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion for reconsideration? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
You should, you should then make a further motion to defer this final action to the next, which would be two weeks from today, which would be the 18th, I believe, June 18th.
I thought that was in the motion, the original.
Well, the motion was to reconsider, which is the first step. The next would be to defer final action until June 18th.
So, a motion to defer final reconsideration action on the zoning petition for two weeks from tonight, which would, which would be June 18. Is that?
I believe it's June 18.
Second. And move in second to move the final action to June 18th. And second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, we'll recognize Katie Davidson with UIS Innovate Springfield for a presentation or an update.
Good evening, and thank you so much for having me tonight. Just, I want to let everyone know, the presentation that I'm, the slides that I'm showing right now, they've been updated from the ones that were originally submitted. So, I found a typo, but fortunately, we were able to get the updated presentation loaded. So, the purpose of tonight is to really provide you with an update on the fiscal year 2019 funding that you all supported, or many of you supported. So, it was, it's almost been a year. So, we, Val and I, Valiezel and I meet monthly to talk about kind of the activities that are happening at Innovate Springfield, and we thought that this was an opportunity for me to come before the council to provide an update and particularly kind of bring some of the new members up to speed. So, I first just want to provide a really quick overview for those that are new to the horseshoes, so that they are familiar with Innovate Springfield and what we do. So, in your packet that I, that was distributed to everyone, you'll find a copy of the presentation along with details on the various talking points that I'm going to be giving tonight. So, Innovate Springfield is a social innovation and business incubator located in downtown Springfield at, on the old State Capitol Plaza. Our social innovation program has been very focused on supporting organizations that serve Springfield's most underserved populations. Innovate Springfield's Social Innovation Action Plan is the Sangamon Success Report, which you'll also find in your, in your folder. It's a community-wide strategy for using evidence-based programs to increase the educational attainment of less advantaged children in Sangamon County. Our Business Incubation Programs, Program supports the startups and early-stage companies as they launch and grow their businesses through Innovate Springfield. So, a little background, we were founded by the Community Foundation for the Land of Lincoln and received our initial seed funding from the Chamber's Q5 Initiative. In 2018, we received three-year funding commitments from the city of Springfield, the EDC, and the Community Foundation, as well as a commitment from the, the University of Illinois system. This just provides a really quick snapshot of our timeline and our history up to this point. So, there was some significant groundwork that was laid prior to us opening our doors in 2016. And because of our, our deep connections to the university through our two program areas, along with emerging opportunities for the Illinois Innovation Network, the transfer to UIS took place in August 2018, almost one year ago. At that time, at that time, we were announced as the first hub of the Illinois Innovation Network. And for those of you who are not familiar, the Illinois Innovation Network is a system of connected university, community, industry-based hubs throughout the state that work together to drive innovation, economic development, and workforce development across Illinois. The hubs will utilize a combination of research, public-private partnerships, entrepreneurship, and workforce training programs to spur economic growth in the region and throughout their, throughout the state. Mayor Langfelder and, and many elected civic and university leaders have been engaged with the Illinois Innovation Network as we've been working to define our hub in Springfield. So, back to our space, through the Business Incubation Program, we offer three primary membership levels. A general membership, which looks like traditional drop-in, open desk seating, dedicated workstations, where members have assigned desks, and private offices. We're currently at capacity on our private offices, and we are near capacity on our workstations. As of today, we have 65 members. Fifty of them are receiving incubation, and 15 are co-working. Of our 50 members receiving incubation, 13 are student memberships, 27 are female founders, and 13 are women of color. And so, all of those folks are working on creating new businesses here in Springfield. In December of 2018, we conducted an economic impact survey of our members. I spoke on the 2017 findings at the, the first time that I was here last year, and just some highlights and some changes. You'll note in your packet, there's some outline of the, the growth that we've, the change from 2017 to 2018. But in 2018, the incubated companies created 31 part- But in 2018, the incubated companies created 31 part-time jobs and 21 full-time jobs. They generated $1.9 million of gross revenue and raised $1.2 million in angel investment, which is fairly significant for this area. In the information, as I, as I mentioned, there'll be, there's some comparisons from 2017, so you can really see the impact and significant growth that, that the funding that you all committed to has, has provided to us. So, I want to highlight just a couple of our members. I don't know that we've talked about many of those to you all, but to just show you exactly sort of through the support of the city, how we've been able to foster their growth. So, Dr. Debbie Makuragai, Mak, Makurghia, I had to write that phonetically, is an associate professor at SIU School of Medicine who's working on the development of a therapeutic drug to prevent and restore hearing loss. It's a combination of two drugs. She's seeking FDA approval and also attempting to commercialize this discovery. So, we, she is a researcher by trade, and we're providing her the tools to, to turn her research into a company. One you may be familiar with, Rasha Said. She has developed a wayfinding app for the visually impaired that she created in response to the, her own child's vision, uh, uh, vision loss. And she was, she contracted with LRS to develop the app and beacon technology. And you can now see those beacons around town, around Springfield, as we have them in many locations throughout downtown, and they're also located throughout the United States. They provide turn-by-turn navigation for visually impaired, incited pedestrians and tourists alike. The main, so, the main impact of the city's funding and what it was intended to do was to serve, to, to, to grow the programming at Innovate Springfield and we, that we've been able to offer to our members and the community. Because of your support, Innovate Springfield has doubled our monthly educational program workshops and series. We've been able to offer a new program to our members in the community called Co-Starters that we are currently doing in partnership with the City of Peoria. This is a nine-week cohort for, of 10 participants who take an idea, and at the end of the program, they turn it into a business. We'll be celebrating the end of our first cohort on Monday, June 17th at Innovate Springfield. You're more than welcome to stop by at 6:00 PM and watch and hear the pitches of those businesses. In July, we'll be partnering with the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign and SIU School of Medicine to host a five-week program called I-COR that's aimed at supporting commercialization of institutional research, similar to what Dr. Debbie is doing right now. So, these two programs, I believe, really achieve a good mix of meeting the community where it's at. We are supporting traditional small business startups through our I-COR program, or, I'm sorry, through our, our Co-Starters program, and laying the groundwork for high-growth technology and therapeutics programs, companies through our I-COR program. Both are critical to, to a thriving innovation ecosystem. It's a very exciting time to be engaged with Innovate Springfield. We have so much activity going on, and there's just so much more in store. We're actively engaging with UIS faculty and staff and students, and are identifying opportunities to grow those connections in the community. We're continuing to provide input on the development of Springfield's innovation hub, and we were very happy to see that the legislature re-appropriated the funding for the Illinois Innovation Network and the Discovery Partners Institute in the passage of the 2020 fiscal year budget. We intend to continue to grow our programming offerings by meeting the community where it currently is with educational series like a new financial literacy program that we intend to launch, while also supporting the advancement of our existing companies through, by creating a strategic growth advisory panel to help companies really accelerate their growth. There's really never been a more exciting time for this community, and I am thrilled to be in partnership with the city to grow the community and to continue to develop solutions to spur economic development, promote entrepreneurship, and empower the innovators of the future. On behalf of the University of Illinois Springfield, please accept my sincerest gratitude on the outstanding level of support you have all shown us as we continue our important work of educating our future generations of leaders and innovators. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions?
I welcome you, anyone who's not been to Innovate Springfield, to come down anytime for a tour of the space. It's really so exciting to see the folks that are doing this great work and, and really just kind of putting their necks, necks out there, starting these companies, and doing great things in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
This time, the chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May 21st, 2019 Special City Council Meeting and approve the minutes.
Move.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense the reading of the minutes of the May 21st, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting and approve the minutes.
Move.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of this city council meeting.
Move.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this city council meeting.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place consent agenda on final passage.
Move.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes eight, voting yes, none voting no. At this time, I'd like to re-recognize Adina Rivas. I think she's here, and have individuals from Republic that like to discuss our waste hauling program related to grass and limb and leaf removal.
Hey, everybody. Adina Rivas, Public Works.
Dan Winters, Republic Services. I'll start out, you know, our team at Republic, we, you know, we understand your frustration. We take full responsibility. We underestimated some of the yard waste clippings that have generated this spring, and we've placed plans to get things back on track. We've added a third route truck. We've added additional trucks this week to be caught up by the end of the week. We are committed to the success of this yard waste program, and we're getting to know where communities where there's higher participation so that we can better plan and route this because there's areas that don't participate in the yard waste side, only in the leaves, it seems like. So, each collection period, we're getting better knowledge and can assure we'll be back on track.
Alderman Redpath.
And thank you for that. That, that really clarifies a lot of my questions right out of the gate because obviously, we're getting a lot of complaints for, and I know every, every ward's getting similar complaints, but I, I think the most important thing is inconsistency. There, people are finding out that if you're running behind and things, and I know it's probably weather-related or, or how that works, but, and then, you know, that's the biggest problem. And then, I talked to one of your, I talked to your dispatcher, or who is ever handling your program, and, because I had people say, "They've missed us for three weeks," and they said, "Sorry, we got GPS trackers. We know exactly where they are, and we know where, what neighborhoods they're in," which helpful, is helpful because as soon as somebody calls me, and I don't, I'm sure the other aldermen do the same thing, when somebody calls me, I go out there. I go out and check the neighborhood, see what it looks like, see if it's exactly how they're explaining it to me. Because frankly, we're, we want this program to work. We absolutely do. It's just that we're getting beat up right now, and it's, it's not, more, probably more phone calls on this stuff than we're getting on anything else.
And we understand, and this is a significant operational change for all of us, and, you know, we're, we're working diligently to work out on our end. One thing that is different with a route of collection, we're doing a sweep. So, sometimes, I was out on route today and seen neighborhoods we were in, and then we noticed 12 people that probably put stuff out after we'd been through there, and if we do go back, that takes us off from the normal route. So, we're, we've got to get better at communicating. If we are running behind, we'll, we'll try to figure out a better way, but please, everybody utilize the, the Springfield YW at republicservices.com, and, you know, we can try to keep you that. But we, we fully intend to have this under control next week to where we, we know where the volume peaks are and can stay on track.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, and do you anticipate at any time you, you'll be able to pretty much tell people when this neighborhood, we're, we'll be getting to you probably on Wednesday or something like that?
Absolutely. And, and again, we weren't aware of how many people didn't, you know, collected their grass clippings, leaves, you know, you just grab everything, the leaves fall, but now it's mainly, you know, garden waste and grass clipping. So, we know where that's prevalent, we're, we're going to know where it's dense and, and that. But we, we'll be able to narrow down the timeframe much better than we are now.
And then, last week, I brought up the fact that I've, I've got a lot of people that they bag every week. And I asked a question, what would be wrong with us allowing, if the other waste haulers want to do it, I don't, I don't know, but allow the stickers to go through at that time on the off weeks? That might alleviate some of your issues too, but, because we do have people and, that, that bag weekly, and during the beginning of the year, obviously, you know, grass grows a lot quicker than it does in July. And if they're, if they want to use stickers for the off weeks, is it, is it something that we can do?
I think the matter of that as far as allowing the waste haulers to go back to the sticker program, it's going back to the original council presentation as far as the original issues with the sticker program.
I can't hear you. Would you speak into the mic, Trump, please?
The original issues with the sticker program to begin with is there, if we allow that to happen, it's this overlap, right? There is an off chance where maybe it isn't actually, or maybe it is actually their week, and they call the waste hauler, and you have Republic coming out, and you have these over chances of overlap happening if we allow that to happen. But then, it's going back to the original issues of the sticker program, why we decided to go to this program in the first place, and there's that learning curve and transition as the summer months go, and the rain gets less and it gets drier, grass is going to be growing as fast. And I know right now, people are every week, or twice a week, you know, mowing their grass, but eventually get to the point where you're just mowing it once a week, or maybe even less, or maybe even learning to mulch. I think there's an education thing going on too. I know, I was talking to Alderman Conley about that a little bit earlier, as far as teaching people what it is that they can do, can, they actually be healthier for the grass and stuff like that. But it is an option that we're looking into. We haven't come up with a solid option. We do have a meeting coming up with all the waste haulers very shortly here, and we can address that as well, to see if there's some system we can come up with.
When, when we talked about this, one of the biggest issues that we had was about the bags that just simply were not stickered and weren't, not getting picked up.
Right.
And if I've, I've got people on a, on a street that they bag every week, and in the off weeks, they throw a sticker on, and they're, they're maybe one of the other waste haulers that, that they do service with, as long, what they've been told is the, the waste haulers have been told, have told them, they're not allowed to pick up anything with a sticker.
Right, to stop the confusion.
But I don't understand what the harm is if it, if it clears the, the gra, the grass. If they're willing to pay for the stickers, I don't care. I, what it does is it gets their grass picked up every week, and it also, it gets the, the grass, the bags that don't get stickered picked up. And that's what my biggest concern was, is getting the bags that sit out on the curb for months without getting picked up because they didn't have a sticker, because the, the companies weren't getting reimbursed for that. So...
I mean, yeah, that definitely is going into the past as far as the major issues we have with the sticker program to begin with.
But it takes care of the week, it gets someone to do week, where they can get their grass picked up weekly.
Right.
That's, that's all this does.
It's the pay-as-you-go system. I know, I was talking to Alderman McMinim about that earlier. I've gotten various calls from residents, those that are willing to pay, and those that want their grass picked up within that five-day, and they don't want to pay. So, really, wait a second, if I have to get a sticker, I have to pay more. I know, so it's kind of balancing that, and it's still looking into the options that we have and talking to the haulers in our next meeting that we actually have, and trying to come up with something, so. Until we actually talk to all the haulers and see what they're willing to do, and seeing, you know, with Republic itself, who actually holds the contract, how is that going to alter, or how is that going to adjust their program, or how's it going to affect their program that they're actually running, you have to kind of weigh all the pros and the cons.
Alderman McMinim and then Alderwoman Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Alderman Hanauer that we need a, a pay-for-service sticker program for the off weeks. People want to pay for additional service, they should be allowed to pay for additional service. But my main problem, and Mr. Winters, you're the general manager, thank you for being here tonight, and Mr. Frye, you're the operational manager, thank you for being here tonight. But as you know, half of Ward 7 didn't get picked up Monday through Saturday, even with Saturday, not picked up. And, you know, we didn't have rain last week, we did have Memorial Day last week, so you were cut off by one day, but that was a serious, serious problem. I mean, it was most of Sherwood, 600 homes, Terra Hill, about 400 homes, Cherry Hills Neighborhood, 100 homes, North of the Mall, 100 homes, Colony West, 500 homes, Brentwood, 100 homes. My own neighborhood got picked up on Saturday morning. So, these are very solid neighborhoods. I mean, these are neighborhoods where people mow, and they trim, and they have a great deal of pride in neighborhood, and we've had bags out there for, going on the start of three weeks. And the other part about it is, we put out very, what we thought was authoritative information that the, across the city sweep would start on the west side and progress to the east side, and people could predict their pickup date based on, if you're on the west side, it's early in the week, if you're on the east side, it's later in the week. But, you know, Ward 7 is on the west side, and it was, we had half of the ward, basically four precincts, four and a half precincts unpicked up. So, we're just alerting you to this serious problem. We got a little, a small revolt taking place. People want to go back to the old system.
We, we understand.
And, and so, the plan was good plan, but the implementation, the execution has been problematic. So, I, I thank you for being here tonight, and you're dedicating more resources to the problem, and more assets and more trucks, and we really got to satisfy our homeowners that, the ones that thought we had a good system to begin with, now they think that that's been taken away, and we got a lesser system. So, this is a serious problem, and we, we really need your help on this, or we're going to have...
I can assure you, we've got all hands on deck on this.
Okay. Alderwoman Turner.
I guess I agree with everything that's been said. I had a whole subdivision that was Adeloff Estates that was missed, and the problem with all the calls that I received was there, a vast majority of those individuals pay for a lawn service to come out and cut and fertilize and do all that. So, then they had the bags sitting there, which, you know, kind of nullified all of the money that they had paid for, you know, for the lawn service and the fertilization and all that. So, I, I guess I just want to, you know, emphasize how serious this problem is. I mean, I will tell you, I've gotten more calls about this, and, and when I was here last week and Alderman, McMinim and Hanauer were talking about it, I was kind of chuckling to myself, "Ooh, nobody's calling me." And then, then right after that...
That's short lived.
Adeloff Estates happened. And so, it's, it is very serious, and I really do think that it would be very beneficial if we could have this, for those people that wanted to purchase stickers and put them on in, in those off weeks. And we have to do something, and I know that, Adina, I know you're working really hard on this, and I know that you're getting calls about it too, but to simply say, "We need to wait until we have a meeting and then weigh everything," by the time we do all that, summer's going to be half over. And, you know, it's, it's just not, I don't know that we can wait that long. We need to do something as expeditiously as possible.
We have been working. I mean, it's kind of been nonstop ever since the program started to, you know, tinker with this, work on this, work on this. We're constantly trying to figure out how to increase the mapping system. And I know Director Bottom was talking about working with our actual mapping system to try and work with Republic's mapping, mapping system to get really detailed information on when those locations would be picked up. So, we're working on that. But when it comes to actually pickups, five-day stickers, we have to have all the waste haulers okay with that, and we have to have their input as far as whether they're willing to do that or not. And so, we have to wait until we actually have a meeting.
No, and that's fine, but I, so I guess, I guess my, I guess when I say that we need to do this as quick as possible, maybe we can speed it when we have the meeting. I mean, that's, you know, we just...
It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow. Okay. Why didn't you say that?
I didn't want to say specifically, but I mean, it's coming up, right?
No, that's, that's, that's great.
But I do want to address that every single time that we have somebody call in, and I want to say that since this program began in April, right, I've been logging every single call. So, when it goes to council coordinators, whether Jeanette or Tim, they CC me on it. Everybody from Public Works CC me on the emails that go to Public, or to actually go to Republic, talking about the issues. I've gotten 208 logged calls. Every single one of those, they're responded to within 24 to 48 hours. They're super quick, and the bags are actually picked up within 24 to 48 hours. You know, so...
are actually picked up within 24 to 48 hours, you know, so we are addressing the issues as they come in, and the mappings, I know, we had a rough start, and we've gotten better with the mappings, and we're still working to, you know.
Well, I will tell you, the bags in Adloff didn't get picked up within 48 hours, and, and, and I understand that you, that, you know, you got 208 calls, but that doesn't account for all the calls that go directly to each of us, you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't have those calls, so you can take that 208, and I'd add another 200, I'd add another 200 on to that, so I guess, I mean, I understand that, you know, you, you're working on it, I know, I understand that you're doing everything you can, I guess I just want to reemphasize how serious the problem is, I mean, you, you know, you probably, people probably think yard waste, no big deal, it is a very big deal.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, and in your defense, you guys have done a good job, as, when I've sent, sent emails to you guys, it's gotten taken care of, in a, you know, in a couple day, business day deal, what I want to, here's where I think, and this is just, this is my opinion, I think that judging from when I've talked to people, they've all said they've gone to their carrier, which isn't you, and they've all said, well, we can't do it, we, we would do this, but we can't, that's why we gotta have a meeting and put them on the spot, because sometimes I think they're, they're throwing it back at us, saying, well, we, we would do it, but I don't think they really would, and what I want to know is, are they willing to do it or not, because if they're not willing to do it, it's a done deal, we don't, there's nothing we can do, but I, I really think that that's, that's part of the problem, they, the, the carriers that didn't get the, the contract are kind of throwing it back at us, saying, well, we would do it, but we don't give the, get the opportunity, so the sticker program and the off weeks, we give them the opportunity, how many would step up and do it, that's the question.
Well, I think in the defense of that process, I think, just like anything else, we bid it out, so you have the bidder, and I would imagine, if I'm the business owner, I'm saying, I'm doing their work for them, and so I think what's gonna happen is, and we have individuals where I live, where they do use the sticker, and that's what we'll have to talk to them about, because it comes to economics for the waste hauler, say Republic did not receive the grant, or receive the award, and you get a call to go to the lake area, and, you know, someone places a sticker on there, I imagine you have regular pickup each week out there, possibly?
Yes.
And so you'd probably tell them, you need to place it on Tuesdays or Thursdays, whenever you're out there, but are you going to sweep through the whole area, I mean, it becomes a part of economics for the waste haulers, and, you know, I, I just don't know if you can speak to that, the economics of that.
Well, not the economics, other than that was the, you know, to cut down on the carbon footprint and the, the infrastructure and the trucks on the streets, but I think we have some things to bring to the meeting tomorrow that can kind of resolve some of your concerns that we'll share in the meeting.
Yeah, that's a good point, because I know, you know, the woman in the Sensos area, they talked about too many waste haulers coming through, and this was a way to cut back on that traffic. Alderman Redpass.
Alderman Turner made the point, you know, you're getting 200 calls, we're getting 500 calls, I took seven today, and I, that's about average what I take every day, and we're getting more calls on this than I've got on any issue in the last two years, I'm gonna tell you right now, and I'm talking about casinos or anything else, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Do you understand the point there?
Well, on the calls, if you could email Adina, so we have a record of all those, would be helpful, that way they can, I imagine, Republic, are you inputting all the calls he addresses?
We are.
On a regular basis, so you can see if areas are being missed on a regular basis?
And, you know, the good point though, Mayor, is that they do have a tracker, so when people call me and say they missed me for three weeks, I go out and look at the neighborhood, and I call them up, and they go, our trackers show them, we were in there last week, and that's, that's a big deal, people understand that we're gonna check, and I follow up.
Eventually, that'll be available to the citizens to see where our truck is, so they'll know when we're coming down that street or in the neighborhood, but that's a little bit off yet, but it's gonna be happening.
Alderman McMinim.
Back to the sticker, reinstituting an allowance for stickers on the off weeks, I mean, the first step is to ask the haulers which ones want to participate in that, and let the free enterprise system work, we don't need unanimous participation by the haulers, we just need to know which haulers want to offer that service, and what do they want to charge for that service, and then let the free market system go forward, so if some haulers don't want to participate, okay, let's rule them out, let's, then let's talk with the ones that do want to participate in a sticker program for the off weeks, and let the fees be paid, and let's go forward, we're taking something away, and we're trying to get it back to those who want it, and pay for it.
Alderman Donlin.
Just one final thing, will you be prepared to update the committee of the whole next week on the outcome of that meeting, or sometime sooner even?
Yeah, I can actually send out a report after the meeting that we have tomorrow, later on in the week.
That'd be good, that'd be good for us to have, I echo Alderman Redpass's comments about the AVLs, I think that's important, because I get, I received an email just yesterday from a neighbor of mine, actually lives in my neighborhood, said he didn't believe that the, the trucks have been through in the last 20 days, and I explained to him how, yes, they have, because I know mine got picked up, and I don't think he had any, but he just, he was just trying to get the schedule down, so I forwarded that, forwarded him that information, it would be absolutely helpful to have those, to know when, because some people, as, as just human nature, they might put them out on a Wednesday instead of the Sunday night, and think that they still have time, and if we could say the trucks have been through, or they haven't, I think that's important, so.
Yeah, I think as we, especially after tomorrow's meeting, really hammering down, you know, what is the program's gonna have, what do we have haulers willing to do, I know Julia Frebert, Communications Director, gonna work on getting a postcard sent out to everybody that literally educates people, trying to figure out the best way to do that, some people don't look at social media, they don't watch council meetings, you know, they don't do a lot of things, they don't open their CWP bill to get bill inserts, so how do you get education out there, if they're not involved with neighborhood news or neighborhood association, so we're thinking maybe a postcard might be the best way, but education is also very much lacking, and I see plenty of people, even neighbors of mine, where we even actually missed our own pickup, so, point being, is it's very difficult, kind of honing in on when the pickups can actually be, last week was difficult, given the holiday, but even more so as the program runs forward, people have a better idea every other week, kind of general timeframe, and then as our mapping gets better, maybe even be able to figure out exactly day when your pickup is, if you can see an interactive map, right, so, transition.
Lovely.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Very much. Any other discussion on this topic? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Chairlent, entertain a motion to remove agenda number 2019-2-217 and 2019-218 from the committee and place them on the debate agenda regarding annexation agreement and annexation property located 3245 Mathers Road. Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Agenda number 2017-103, 2017-489, 2018-110, 2018-545, 2019-008, 2019-231, and 2019-232 remain tabled during committee. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-217, ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement with Lisa Schultz for annexation of property located 3245 Mathers Road, Chairlent, entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the city council to hold a public hearing regarding this annexation agreement.
So moved.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Public hearing is now open, does anyone wish to address the city council regarding this annexation agreement? Chairlent, entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Chairlent, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-217 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the voting is now And the motion passes eight voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-218, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 3245 Mathers Road and owned by Lisa Schultz, Chairlent, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-218 on final passage.
So moved.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2000, oh, sorry.
Got a vote.
Yep. Do we have to do a public hearing on that?
No.
No. So all those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the voting is And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-250, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $30,000 from unappropriated fund balance for the Office of Public Works. Chairlent, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-250 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the voting is now The ordinance passes seven voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-254, an ordinance reappointing John A. Malek as alternate inspector general for the city of Springfield, Chairlent, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-254 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the voting is now open. And the motion ordinance passes seven voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-255, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Christina Cray to the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees, Chairlent, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-255 on final passage.
So moved.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the voting is now open. And the ordinance passes seven voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-256, a resolution requesting that the city of Springfield be included with other Illinois municipalities for consideration of receiving a casino license if the state of Illinois establishes a new casino license program. Chairlent, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-256 on final passage.
Motion to withdraw the, the ordinance.
Been moved to withdraw, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second, any discussion? We do have Scott Stallman signed up to speak, yep, if you'd like to come forward, please, and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Caught me looking at my phone. I'm Scott Stallman, 4124 Chamomile Lane, 62711, I'm in Ralph's District. Perhaps it's too late now that since the legislature has left town, so my words this evening are for the future in hopes that you'll remember them, when I was an officer in the United States Army, they taught us to never force a bad plan, that is, if there was something that you weren't sure was going to be successful, don't do it. That's my feeling on the casino. Right now, Taylorville, Bloomington, Pena, Jacksonville, all these communities, Belleville, have video gaming licenses, city of Springfield has more video gaming machines than any other city in the state. There are 10 casinos in the state of Illinois, six of which are within a 200 mile radius of Springfield, there are three in St. Louis, one of them closed, there were four, the market is saturated, in fact, Springfield could be considered a casino town already with the video gaming. It's already a matter of record that nine out of the 10 casinos in Illinois have lost revenue, the only one that has revenue in the last year was the Riverboat at Des Plaines, we've already missed the boat, the casino is a past, we've already missed the glory heyday, had we been the first, it would have been wonderful, the market is saturated. Paradise Casino in Peoria has gone through two layoffs, and its tax revenues to the city has dropped a million dollars, once the video gaming started. Who's going to come to Springfield to play poker and roulette? They've already got Peoria, they've got St. Louis, they've got Will County, perhaps Danville, who's on the list, they'll go there, do you want to budget the city on decreased revenues? There could be no doubt that the majority of money in a casino here in Springfield will come from Sangamon County residents, why do we want our voters wasting money in a casino instead of supporting our existing local businesses, or better yet, save the money? To me, it makes no sense, and I urge our council to ignore the colorful hope that a casino solves our revenue problem. Today, the Daily Herald out of Arlington Heights reports that the casinos are experiencing across the board declining revenues, if we want revenue, I encourage us to look elsewhere, it's a bad plan, and we don't want to force a bad plan.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to withdraw? Oh, sorry, Alderman Conley.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to, before I vote, I just wanted to thank you for bringing this option, I appreciate that you're, you're looking continually to, to bring new revenue and new opportunities to Springfield, I am gonna be voting no on this, because I'm not comfortable with, with this particular one, but I do appreciate the effort and look forward to finding new routes for us.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to withdraw, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the voting is now open.
This is a voice vote?
Nope.
So we're voting yes to withdraw, is that correct?
Correct.
So now, correct, council.
All those motion.
That is correct.
And the motion passes six voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-280, an ordinance authorizing purchase of software from Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed $134,240 for the Springfield Police Department for Emergency Passage, Chairlent, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-280 on emergency passage.
So moved.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the voting is now And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2019-281, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number 19-365010 from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity under the Tourism Marketing Partnership Program in the amount of $59,000, with matching funds required in an amount of $59,000 beginning January 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2019, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $59,000 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau for Emergency Passage, Chairlent, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-281 on emergency passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion?
Mayor, as we all, as we always do, could you explain the emergency?
Director Dawil.
So anytime we have a grant from DCEO, it's on a seven day turnaround, so that's the reason for the emergency passage, that we have a quick turnaround to get the grant back in DCEO's hands, so that's the reason it's always on emergency, you'll see this a couple times a year, this one in particular, this is the first time in four years that DCEO has offered this MPP grant, and because the city and the state's fiscal years don't match up, we didn't believe we had an opportunity at this grant, but Jeff Berg and Krista Grant at the CVB staff, and the 24 hours left for the expiration of the grant, decided they'd go after it, and lo and behold, we received the grant, this adds $59,000 more dollars to our marketing efforts this year, so.
Great.
That's why it's on the emergency passage.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the voting is now And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, none voting no. Chairlent, entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading agenda number 2019-280, an ordinance authorizing payment of $30,000 to Lincoln Land Charity Championship for regional and local marketing and promotion of the PGA Tour Golf in Springfield from June 10th, 2019, through June 16th, 2019.
So moved.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Is there any unfinished business to bring before the city council? We have two items, one is the Levitt grant, or the Levitt music series that started last Thursday around 6:00, had a great turnout, and they're continuing this Thursday at 6:00, so hopefully people will take the time. So, hopefully, people will take the time to go down to the Y Block. It's a family event and open to everyone. I think the group is scatolites, so.
I just want to tell you, I had a wonderful time last Thursday. I've got the poster up in my office, and I've had a lot of people very excited about the scatolites.
How good.
So, I will be down there in a couple of days.
That'll be good.
Yep.
And then also, the capital bill. We received full funding for the rail project, which is our highest priority. And then Nate Bottom is actually checking with IDOT about other road improvements, things of that nature. So, I'm sure there'll be other opportunities with regards to the capital bill aside from that.
Those other road improvements, Mr. Mayor, include Peoria Road and MacArthur Boulevard. Is that correct?
That's what he's checking on. Those were, all were printed into our requests. So, IDOT received, of course, their regular budgeted funding. But what else is above and beyond that remains to be seen.
Thank you.
But the other one is, of course, the Y Block. It's my understanding that there's a large portion of capital bill funds put into a line item that will be kind of competitive with regards to that. So, we will be pushing that initiative forward exponentially. Any new business bring before the City Council? We do have a utility meeting tomorrow, 5:30, I believe. Is that right, Alderman Turner?
Yes.
5:30. And this weekend, the Music Legacy of Giving Music Festival will take place on Friday from 5:00 to midnight, and then Saturday from 12:00 to 12:00. And then also, on Thursday, is the 75th anniversary of D-Day, and there's two ceremonies. One is at the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library Museum at 10:00. And then at Oak Ridge Cemetery, there's a ceremony at 11:00. And then this Saturday is the Susan G. Komen Cancer Walk. And I believe that registration starts at 5:00 in downtown Springfield, and it kicks off around 6:30. Any other new business? Sir, I think we have two individuals sign up to speak. First one is Roger Dennison.
Thank you, folks. You should have got a folder handed out to you. And all that's inside it is, on the right-hand side of the folder, is the IRP comments I submitted and foresight. And I'd ask if you want to pull out the one that looks like this in the front. There's a few pages stapled together. That's what I'm gonna talk up of this evening. So, anyway, real quick, I appreciate the opportunity to come back. And I thought I'd try to make an effort to come back instead of the statements I made to kind of back them up with some numbers and see where they're going here. So, first thing is to understand the IRP, the little graph at the top left in the reference case. Dolman IV is not running in that reference case, folks. It's the scenario below that actually, that scenario IV, that adds Dolman back in, the Dolman IV. So, you can see by the charts, it's not running. The reference case summary, it wasn't running. And then the charts over there to the right side of that page, you saw last week. It's just, again, I'm pushing the point that the flat coal price is the price to be looking at, and also looking at an RFP for future price. So, if you turn to page two, and this is all the IRP, it looks like this. Got the little chart big enough that I can read without my glasses. Again, the reference case in here shows your additional NPVRRRs, $101 million. If you're gonna add Dolman IV, there's another $30 million. Dolman III is another $210 million. So, if you do all them, keep in mind, you still pay the reference case. You gotta add the other scenarios to it, which is a Dolman. So, totally, if you look at what's in the IRP, if you kept all those, kept the two plants, now that's $341 million. It's over $17 million a year to do that. So, that's just for a reference. Again, these things all have bad coal prices in them, is the point I'm trying to make. So, flip to the next page. You saw this chart last week, again, that shows the different coal prices, the flat coal price, and the escalated coal prices, again, they're bad in 2021, and they're bad clear through 2039. So, again, I'm pushing the flat coal price is the one you gotta look at to save these plants, and that's still overmarket, to my opinion. And we can prove that with an RFP. That's where the $1.58 line comes below that. So, it's the same thing. Question I had last week, again, and the week before. It said, "CWLP expects to continue to burn exclusively from the Viper Mine." My question, again, is who provided these prices? Is there already a deal I'm not aware of, or folks aren't aware of? And I don't know if we can answer that tonight, council, or who I'd have to get that answer from. But I want to make sure I'm not just chasing my tail.
Yeah, the Energy Authority, you know, so we'll have that compiled in the public comments.
Okay. And then I put over to the right the little chart. This was pulled out of either report of coal prices. That's just to show my statement last week, folks, that the utilization of these plants, being able to run them harder and longer if you could get the right coal price in, also changes the dynamics of this whole thing. So, that's the history of the prices so far. We know where the price is at today. And again, the little chart below there just shows the match. So, all I did was took and looked at these cases, folks. I ran a flat coal price for Dolman IV. I revised it to say, "What if you do an RFP?" I did that for 2021 to show you where it starts. I did it for 2039 to show where it ends. I also did a case on Dolman III to show what if there's a flat coal price into Dolman III. And then I finally went back and also looked at the reference case and adjusted it to the new coal price, so you could get an idea. Not knowing exactly what the coal prices are, or the coal part is of the CWLP power plant, I looked at the 2020 electric fund budget expenses. I looked at the total of commodities and contracts. I took 1.2 million tons times the coal price you're paying. Looks to me like it's 39% of that number. So, everything I adjusted in here, looking at the O and M cost of the plant or whatever, was only 39%. I used that number, because that's what it looks like the coal price is at the effect of plants. So, quickly, again, I did a 2021 through 2025. If you look at that middle column that says additional NPVR, again, it's $101 million in here for the reference case. And just adjusting the coal price back to the flat coal price drops this thing down instead of the $30 million that you'd be looking at for a Dolman IV to 20, to 22 million if you could do an RFP. So, that's only 2021. The real true case is the next page, looking at Dolman IV in 2039. If you look at that additional NPVRRR that's required, the same $30 million, just by putting the coal price to flat case, drops that to $16 million. And you go and get an RFP and bring it to $1.58, it knocks it from $30 million to $11 million. That's the impact having the right coal price has in here. And if you look at the very right side there, where it says it's 1.5 million a year for Dolman IV to do this, you've now dropped it to a half a million a year just by putting in the correct coal price and doing an RFP. So, I'll flip the page to Dolman III. And again, these are all in my IRP. I just didn't, I just want to throw them out. If you look at Dolman III, where there was no case ran for on the flat coal price, so I come in and take Dolman III, and, okay, it's $240 million, or whatever it is for it, again. That's why I need my big chart, so I can see it better. Is, when you look at Dolman III in this case, you say, "I put in a flat coal price." What happens to it? It says it's 10.5 million a year to keep Dolman III in the reference case. If you put in the coal price that brings it, just going back to the flat coal price, brings that number down from the 240 to $117 million over the period. And if you go get an RFP and bring the price down to the $1.58, or that level where I'm saying we're at, you need that to prove that, you're down to $77 million. You look at the LCOE column, the cost of electricity goes from $53 to $40. You're now playing in this market, these plants. So, when you look at Dolman III, turn to the very last page, and I'll be quiet in a minute. I've summarized everything, folks. I redid the reference case. The reference case shows, instead of $5 million bucks, it's $1 million bucks if you get the right coal price in there. So, you go say, "Well, the reference case," and if I do Dolman IV and drop it to the flat coal price, plus go get an RFP, and I go do the same for Dolman III, if you look at the bottom, the number shows, instead of being over $17 million bucks here a year to do this thing, it's $6 million. It's less than the reference case is by itself by just going and getting the correct fuel price in there. I know that's a lot of numbers to spit out, but I've been looking at a lot of numbers. And I'm just a simple coal miner using a little bit of math, trying to figure this out myself. But that's the kind of impact it has. And keep in mind, you're looking at 58 and 57% utilization for Dolman III and IV. So, if they run more, it goes down. But if you look at the LCOE on that, you're down to $36.74 with Dolman III running. That's the average between the two and Dolman IV. I calculated the megawatt hours they run, looked at this number, and said, "This is my best guess what it is a year." It's $36.74 is the cost of electricity. Your NYMEX case in here that has nothing to do with this coal price is $39. So, unless I'm completely crazy, you're way off, and smarter people than me will do the final thing, folks. I'm just telling you that I didn't just want to keep coming up saying, "Do it, do it, do it." I'm saying economically and looking at it, it makes sense to do. Inside your packet, too, is this. I'm not talking at all about it. I just got this this afternoon, and it came from American Power on LCOEs, basically saying, you know, comparing.
We'll add that to the public comments as well.
So, I'm done. Unless anybody's got any questions. I know it's a lot to go through, but it's a lot to try to talk about in five minutes. I'm sorry. But it's all inside my IRP comments, and again, foresights are in there.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Jeremy Judd, Jeremy here. Somebody else wish to address the council? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.